Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. FRC Media is pleased to host tonight's forum featuring the candidates running for Fall River School Committee. My name is Keith Tebow, Director of FRC Media, and I'll be the moderator for tonight's forum. All candidates were invited to participate in tonight's forum. Joining us tonight are, in alphabetical order, Kevin Aguirre, Bobby Bailey, Colin Dias, Thomas Corey, Michelle Mimi Laravee, Shelley Pereira, and Sarah Rodriks. Thank you all, candidates, for joining us tonight. Also joining us tonight is a panel of individuals will be asking questions of the candidates this evening. They are Michael Sylvia from the Fall River Reporter, Pamela Martin from FRGTV and Fred TV, and Alan Zarek from WSAR. The format of tonight's forum is as follows. Our forum will last 90 minutes. There will be no opening statements, but each candidate will be allowed a 90-second closing statement. Each candidate will answer every question tonight posed by our panelists and will have 90 seconds to do so. There will be no rebuttals. Prior to each question, we will randomly draw a name, and that candidate will respond to the question first. We will then work our way around the panel so that every candidate has an opportunity to answer each question. Candidates will only be asked to answer a question first once unless they happen to all answer a question first once and there's still time, and then we'll redraw names. In the event, again, if all candidates are not selected to answer a question first, we'll go back to our drawing, and that candidate will deliver the closing statement first at that time. All right, we're going to get right going with the question. Our first question will be asked by Michael Sylvia of the Fall River Reporter, and the candidate who will answer the question first will be Sarah Rodriks.
So let me set this question up with some background info. Fall River has twice the poverty rate and half the income of the rest of the state. I'm a firm believer education is key to this. High school graduates earn $100,000 more than non-graduates. College graduates earn $1 million more of their lifetime than the non-high school graduates. Of all the males in federal and state prison, 80% do not have a high school diploma. There is a direct correlation with the lack of high school education and incarceration and low income and poverty. Are you satisfied with Fall River's high school graduation rate? If not, what can we do to improve it?
Ms. Rodriks.
Not. We do not have a high enough high school graduation rate. I think that's a pretty obvious response there. I think part of improving what that high school graduation looks like is making sure that kids are engaged from the moment they set foot into our pre-Ks, our kindergartens, and they feel an investment in our schools. And so our kids are not going to continue to show up. Our kids are not going to try unless they feel like they have connections, relationships, and that there's value in showing up every day. And so I know that we talk about this often. We talk about our attendance rates, but it goes well beyond when kids are physically coming through the door. What it really comes down to is how are we working with our kids? Are we meeting their very specific needs? Are we addressing their interests? Are we building on their strengths? Are we capitalizing on those things so that they can look at different options for when they graduate in order to be able to move forward into whatever those next steps are? But that high school diploma really has to be the highest level of, not the highest level, it has to be a high level of attainment. It has to be some value in that for these kids. I think part of that conversation is what does it look like to be a high school graduate? And what are the doors that then open for you as a high school graduate? I think without that, without understanding what that really means, we're losing a lot. So I think there's a whole lot more that we can do.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. One of the other pieces of information that we could look at is when a student's not able to read on grade level by grade three, what is the outcome then? And I think that's also a combination with what we have here, so that I think we need to start, when we're doing this, we're trying our best to do it, but I think we have to start doing a little more of it. At the early grades, we need to make sure that all of our students are able to read by the end of third grade. There's really no excuse for that. We have the money now. We have the resources. We need to get that done. When you look into the high schools and the options, we need to have more options. True alternative education needs to be an option for kids. We need to look at different avenues. Sometimes we get a student in high school or eighth grade that might have zero credits or they're in, you know, a second year freshman, third year freshman. What do we do with those children? We need to have legitimate options. One of the options is a HICE, what we used to call a GED. I think that's a viable option for students so that they can get that at a 17-year-old, come to BCC, go to a trade school, do what they need to do in order to become a productive member of society. But I think we have to combine all of the facts and the resources that we have now to make a comprehensive plan to work with each and every child. So our graduation rate does go up, and to answer your question, no, it's not acceptable at all, what it is now.
Mr. Bailey?
Just reiterating some of the things that Ms. Rodriks and Mr. Aguirre were saying, options plays a major role. Also preparing our kids, I consistently say that our students are direct, our city is a direct impact of the students that we pour out. We want to make sure that we're preparing our kids, our students, to be, you know, members of our city who are actually adding to our city. As far as the graduation rate, absolutely not. You know, you take COVID, for example, and when you look at more affluent communities and how we prepared, well, how they prepared their students, I mean, we went directly to basic needs. And I think those things were important, but when you look at more affluent communities, they crowded around their kids. You know, they still prepared their kids. They educated their kids, and you see, you know, how that affects them, and they prepare them for college and they prepare them for the workforce. So I think these things are important. When we talk about options, we talk about vocational program and trade schools to make sure that, you know, these students are graduating and going directly to work and can be active members in society.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you for the question, Mike. And just to reiterate what Mr. Aguirre said and what Mr. Bailey said, it's important that when students graduate, they go somewhere, first of all, just to answer your question, graduation rate, I think everyone's going to agree, we need to do better as a community. Just to touch on a few things, early college education. We have partnerships with both Bristol, this school, Bristol Community College, and we have a partnership with Bridgewater State University, where I attend currently. We need to make more of a regional collaboration with MIT, MTTI, New England Tech. We need to increase our vocational technical education, and you're going to be hearing me repeat the same thing for a lot of these answers. I think the bottom, one of the key issues we need to tackle as a community is engaging with parents more, engaging with the community more. I know we have a subcommittee in the school district right now that does great work with neighborhood and parent collaboration. If I'm elected, I would love to attend that subcommittee meeting, be a part of it so we can tackle that issue more. We need an environment that encompasses everyone in this community, whether you live in the Highlands, whether you live in the Flint, the North End, or the South End. We need to reach out to parents. Parents shouldn't be reaching out to us. We should be reaching out to them more. And thank you for your question.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, graduation rate problems in Fall River have been chronic for many years. But right now, we have a brand spanking new high school, which is a state-of-the-art facility, and hopefully it encourages kids to be more involved in their high school education. But it starts early. We need parents of children in the elementary grades to be great advocates for their youngsters. And we now have preschool programs that are opening the door toward early learning. We also should ensure that a child should be able to read by third grade, and we should also ensure that cursive writing remains in place in grades three, four, and five. Also, like Mr. Aguirre said, the alternative schools provide a different approach for so many kids that need it. But we also have been, when I was on the school committee formally, we expanded Chapter 74 programming, which is career and technical education, and that's all meant to keep a young student in high school. And we also have these early college programs and our collaboration and partnerships with Bridgewater, UMass Dartmouth, and BCC. So hopefully, kids would stay in and graduate.
Thank you. Ms. Laravee?
Thank you, Keith. So the high school graduation rate, we all know it can be, it can be better. Like Ms. Corey said, this has been an ongoing situation for years. Everybody up here has said it starts early, right? So it starts with prevention. It starts with the early grades. It starts with literacy. It starts with it all. But what do we do when they're in middle school, right? I strongly feel we've got to do a better job doing some deep dives on what their interests are and transitioning them into high school, right? So how about some life skills and some hands-on learning? Not every child learns the same way. Not every child can succeed in a classroom in the standard way of teaching. Some of these kids these days need hands-on learning. I'm a big proponent of that, but there are a lot of moving pieces that definitely affect the graduation rate. But I think we're in the right direction. There's so much good happening at Durfee, stuff that's capturing these kids. But if there's stuff that's not going on, you know, maybe we need to figure that out. And so we can't capture the ones that are falling through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira?
Thanks, Keith. Thank you, Mike, for the question. To answer, obviously, as everyone else here stated, no, we're not happy with the graduation rate. I don't think anyone would be happy until it's 100%, right? Otherwise, there's always something. There's always a student we've left. Continuing expanding our pre-K is crucial because getting parents and children involved in the learning process as early as possible is crucial. Early education is so important. It's where our children learn their curiosity and their want to learn and sort of how to learn. And that love of education can take them through their, you know, through their career. I think when they get older, we need to continue to do things like build our CTE program and give students options of other things to do that'll keep them interested and wanting to, you know, to show up. I think also extending our after-school programs, making different programs available to us scholars so that they're excited to go to school, not just to learn, but to participate in other things with their peers. And then lastly, I think it would benefit our students if we supported our mass teachers associations and said, we don't need MCAS to graduate. Because if we have students who are coming to school and are showing up and are learning, I don't think one task should take a diploma from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to our next question, I just want to bring up a couple of notes. Two other candidates were invited to be here tonight, Charles Chase Jr. and Warren Alves. Mr. Alves did call earlier this evening. Unfortunately, he has fallen ill and was not able to attend tonight's forum. Our next question will be asked by Pam Martin from Fred TV, and it will be answered first by Mimi Laravee.
Okay. Thanks for being here, everyone. Every morning and afternoon, the emerald yellow buses crisscross the city. However, I see these buses are a third or even half-empty, maybe the last two. But it's the opposite, I feel, with Durfee students, who must purchase a Serta pass, which amounts to about $1 a trip. Waivers are available if they qualify, and that's if they even know about this waiver. Durfee students that I speak with describe the Serta buses as jammed, some students even standing over the yellow line. Students tell me the morning pickup time can vary by as much as 10 minutes, which makes for a very long school day when these students are waiting in the rain, and most do wait in the rain. Please explain to me the school transportation budget. Is it broken?
Ms. Laravee?
Hi, Pam. Thank you. The transportation budget, I believe it just keeps getting higher and higher. Let me say, we do transport over 5,000 students. That's not the Serta buses. I mean, that's a whole other level. But as far as the bus passes go, I believe every student can get a waiver, like you said, but I believe more and more kids are getting them now. It's always been difficult to try to figure out why we can't transport our kids on the yellow buses versus the city buses, and I know what it comes down to, and I think everybody up here knows what it comes down to, and that's money. Okay? It's already very, very difficult for the city of Fall River because the school department doesn't pay for transportation, as we know, and the city does. And it just keeps getting higher and higher, and it's been a little difficult, actually very difficult for the city to afford the transportation. With more and more money coming in from the state, hopefully, we can address this and we can start figuring out how to get these kids on these buses. I mean, this is one of the, the most phone calls I've gotten since being on the school department has been related to transportation.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pereira?
So I think, thank you for the question, Pam. I think initially, the question was, is transportation out of whack? Do we have to fix it? The answer is yes. I was actually thinking about this today when I was thinking about attendance in my head, and I was thinking, when's the last time we did? I don't know if they would call it an audit or whatever of transportation in this city. Because I honestly haven't received many calls regarding transportation. I've received calls, you know, from constituents on other things, but I've seen it myself, the five students on a bus, or how about, you know, students who are walking and we don't have sidewalks that are really, you know, safe for them to walk on. In Massachusetts, I think it's elementary school. If you live by law, right, it's, you have to live a mile from the school. If you're an above-grade student, it's a mile and a half. I don't know the last time you walked a mile to get to work, but yeah, I think transportation is a huge problem in this city. Not only is it something that I think is difficult for our parents to navigate when they're working two jobs and have to bring two kids to two different schools and be at this bus stop and that bus stop. I don't have an answer to the transportation issues, but I will tell you that it's a huge part of our attendance issue, and we need to do a full audit and figure out what's going on so that, you know, we can make changes that are better for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriks?
So in regards to transportation, I think that is our biggest barrier to getting our kids to school, right? So it's been inconsistent. It's been unreliable. And I'm talking as a whole, not in very specific situations. I think there's also some need to understand that some of those buses that we might see with five or six kids on them, some of that is door-to-door special ed transportation. So that's going to look a little bit different. But outside of that, the fact that our kids are coming from the South End, they have to take a bus to get to Durfee, obviously, because we're not walking there, and they're crowded, and it's overwhelming, and we can't count on the time, no, we can't expect that those kids are going to be in their seats. And then what do we do? We turn around and we penalize them. So I agree wholeheartedly that this is completely out of whack, and there's not really great systems to ensure that what should be happening is actually happening. And so I think because we are a little bit removed from transportation, we don't run the transportation companies, we don't run those systems, we don't determine, you know, who gets where, then it causes an extra layer of us having to dig and understand to fully grasp what's happening there. But it is the biggest barrier for our families to get anywhere. If we want our kids to graduate, going back to Mike's question, then we have to have a reliable way for them to get in their seats.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so first thing we have to do is look at some of the facts. So the fact of the matter is, is that the city is responsible for paying for the transportation. And if anyone's been paying attention to the last several budgets, the city is continually coming to the school department, telling the school department, we have to spend millions of dollars to fund the transportation. That's the city's responsibility. So when we look at finally getting the resources that we need for schools, we're being continuously asked to take hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars away to go towards transportation. So we just need to call it like it is. If it's a city responsibility to pay for transportation, then the city needs to run it and fund it properly. With that being said, I agree with you that the Serta buses are not the way to go for our buses. They're overcrowded, they're unsafe, all those things that a regular bus couldn't do. What is the answer to that? If the responsibility comes back to the school department and the state gives us the resources in order to say, we're going to fund it, then we will be in a position to make that case. But the school committee has no say over this as far as what to do. At the end of the day, it's the city's responsibility. The other thing that's just not fair is everybody needs to talk about it, that we look at, you could look at the same corner in this school system and a student, and I love Diamond Voke, but a student could be going to Diamond Voke, they get a yellow bus, the other student that's sitting on their side goes in a Serta bus. That's inequitable, and it's unfair, and the legislature, not us, the legislature needs to decide if they're going to fund that for Diamond, they need to fund it for Fall River schools.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I agree with what everyone said. I mean, I think in underrepresented communities, it is the biggest barrier, no matter how you look at it. We're not just talking about kids getting back and forth during the school day, whether it's extended day. I use myself as an example. I mean, I didn't live too far, but you have kids walking home, you know, it's obviously affecting kids' attendance. You know, with the gnat, as you, as the seasons, you know, it starts getting colder out, right? That starts affecting attendance. Everything else, when we talk about bus passes, we do have families, I mean, obviously with inflation and everything else, that are struggling, who can't afford these things. So it's really taking a hard look in, you know, restructuring how these things look.
Thank you. Mr. Dias?
And thank you for your question, Pam. Just listening to my colleagues, first, I agree with Mr. Aguirre. This is a city issue. I believe as we, as school committee members, should advocate, advocate to the state to change the law so the city doesn't have to be on the hook. Because Mr. Aguirre is right. If you look at some of the budgets over the last few years, you see, you see the issue. I attend Bridgewater State University. I take a shuttle around campus. I don't pay a dime, but shuttle's always on time. And really, it has me wondering. It has me asking questions myself. We talk about attendance, if, and then we, transportation all across the board, I know we have the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, but I'll just take Durfee High School, for example, and we look at attendance rate because students can't make the bus, can't make Serta. I wonder, the higher, the lower the attendance rate, the further you weigh you are from Durfee into the South End. That's an issue that needs to be addressed. Again, we need to advocate. Again, I would love to see, again, we have an operating budget of $141 million for this fiscal year. Again, we should be able to help, give a helping hand to these students to be able to make the bus to get to school.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Pam. It's a tough question. In my experience, transportation costs go up every single year. So every budget cycle, it's a, it's a big deal. That's number one. I'm glad that we're able to give pass waivers to the kids to help them afford their rides on the Serta buses. But when I was in my former term, I was a member of the Attendance Task Force, and I looked at a citywide demographic map of the city and bus points, and there are so many little areas that are outlying in our, in our district that are extremely difficult for a child to, to get up, you know, and meet the Serta bus. So those turn into attendance, chronic attendance issues. So I think both issues, attendance and transportation costs, are very closely tied. We need a serious consultation from an outside expert to give us better ideas on how to mitigate our costs and get these kids into school.
Thank you. Alan Zarek has our next question for the candidates, and it will be answered first by, in this round?
Now, as for now...
Colin Dias will be first.
There we go. As of now, the city of Fall River, as a gateway city, gets around, I believe, an extra $20 million for the next several fiscal years, and I believe that money in this fiscal year went toward hiring somewhere in the neighborhood of, I believe, was 160 to 165 positions. If I'm wrong, one of you can correct me, but we live in an unstable world, and I'm wondering if that money disappears and you've got people hired in this school district, are there any contingency plans to try to pay for all these positions and keep these people working? What happens if that money should go away?
I 100% agree with you. Thank you for the question, Alan. There's something I thought about over the last few years. I do not believe any ESER funds should be used for temporary part-time expenses, meaning salaries, things that aren't, you know, fluent. I believe our ESER funds should go towards maintenance of our schools. If I'm on the school committee, I'm going to be a staunch advocate to making sure one-time monies go towards one-time expenses. We have high school, our high school, we, Mr. Corey's right, we just built a new Durfee High School. In the next 30 years, I don't want to have to build another Durfee High School. We need a maintenance plan to maintain our schools so we don't have to charge the taxpayers $10 million, $20 million, $150 million for a new middle school, elementary school, high school. I believe the priority of our ESER funds should be towards maintenance, and we need a maintenance plan to make sure we don't charge the taxpayers even more in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Thanks for the question, Alan. Alan, I don't know if I have a definite answer for you, however, I think what you're implying is those extra monies are coming from the Student Opportunity Act in order for us to be able to employ and create the resources for the special populations that we're trying to serve as a gateway city. We are, our resources get taxed in special ed, get taxed in all kinds of other programs for kids with disabilities, and we're putting so much money with the stress of the MCAS requirement to try to get these kids through school that it becomes, you know, extremely expensive. And so the Student Opportunity Act is providing that extra funding. However, I don't know what the thinking of the state legislature would be on behalf. They granted us the Student Opportunity Act, and it's for a period of, I believe, seven or eight years. So after that, I would have to think that they can't just strip it away, especially to a gateway city like Fall River, like New Bedford, like Brockton. They would have to put something in place to maintain, you know, what they created in the first place. That's what I think.
Ms. Laravee?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Corey. Let's see, so Laura Healy has come down and just said we're getting $55 billion for education, I believe. So statewide, of course. But I can't see in 2027, when the SOA Act goes away, them not funding the, the stuff that we need in Fall River. And if that happens, that'll, that'll be drastic to the city of Fall River, it'll be drastic to any gateway city, an urban district in the, in the Commonwealth. The state is proving that they have a strong commitment to education, and Fall River is seeing that right now. We do have all these positions. We are almost filling all the positions. We still have a lot of empty positions, but, you know, it is a concern, and I, and I think it's a great, great question. And I, I don't have an answer, and I don't think anybody else has an answer for that right now. We just hope that the state stays committed to, to funding education for the, especially the urban cities where, okay, thank you.
Ms. Pereira?
Thank you, Alan, for the question. I would say, I was going to say we're lucky that we got all that money, but really, it's not luck. We deserve to get it because the students here need it, and the students in our neighboring gateway cities need this money. I'm scared that we hire teachers that maybe we can't pay for in seven years. No, because I agree that if the state's going to give us this money and we're hiring all these teachers and our schools are starting to make a little headway, are they going to come and say, oh, we're taking all this money from you, even though you're still, you know, on some plan of recovery? I can't see that happening. I think that, I guess, we're willing to play their bluff. All I know is if we spent the money on a one-time thing, then maybe we wouldn't have the teachers we have or get them in another seven years. So the reality is, what we needed were more teachers in our classrooms. Now, if we can just hire them, that would be, that would be something great. But I don't think, right now, I'm worried about if they're going to fund those positions. I think they will.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriks?
So once it's fully phased in, the Student Opportunity Act, which is where a lot of that money is coming from, is eventually going to infuse about $1.5 billion into the state, right? And so while I am the eternal optimist, and I would hope that the state would then turn around and say, absolutely, we've seen progress, we're going to continue to fund this, I think we also have to be cautious and understand that there's a lot of advocacy work that has to happen over the next seven years to make sure that what is happening have been good decisions, good fiscal decisions, to use that money wisely to support the teachers and students that are directly in the classrooms, and then we can provide data to go back and say, this is why this funding needs to continue. So if we don't concurrently plan for that advocacy piece, then I think we're doing ourselves a disservice, and we may end up in a situation, I hope not, but we may end up in a situation where we don't have the funds to do that. So I think a strategic way of doing that is to look at, first, how are we spending that money? What are we doing with it? Are we making sure that it's going directly to the program services, supports that have to be in our classrooms, directly serving our students instead of some of the upper-level positions? And then how are we... level positions? And then how are we collecting that data so that we can use that in the advocacy efforts to make sure that we continue to get those funds?
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
Yes, so the, I'm not concerned about it at all. And one of the reasons why is because we have checked it out as we were passing budgets to add these positions. I, for one, demanded that we get an answer from our financial people, from our superintendent, to exactly what the question Mrs. Eric just asked. What are we going to do if this money goes away? And are we prepared, over the years, to make sure that we can continue this with multi-budget, multi-year budget forecasting? We did that. And what we've done is, you see, we're not going to get $10 million a year, every year after the seventh year. So as you get closer to the seventh year, you have to plan multi-year budget. So we know, okay, next year, we might get 5 million, or we might get 2 million. When I first got on this committee, we were getting 2 million less. So we're finally getting the money that we were always, we should have gotten because the schools were underfunded in Fall River. And this becomes part of the Chapter 70 formula. So it's not a one-time monies, it's not ESER funds. So the formula is actually going to be telling us in seven years, this is how much it costs in order for us to educate our students. With that being said, the legislature is going to be, always going to be continuing the Chapter 70 formula. And if it gets cut a couple of percent, it'll be across, across the board. But the real question out there is, we've received over 10 or 15 million dollars a year to influx of staff for the last three or four or five years. What are the results that we're getting for that 15 million dollars? That's the real question that should be asked.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
I agree. It's, it's taking, taking a look and taking a real hard audit and seeing what that looks like. Look, we're, right now, some of the, the topics we're discussing, you know, we're talking about graduation rates, we're talking about the kids, we're talking about pouring back into the kids without, the kids, none of us have a job, right? And I consistently say that. I think we're in an extremely pivotal point right now when it comes to giving our kids the resources, right? And we talk about whether it's one-time monies or not, I think it's being innovative. If it's bringing on more teachers, it's really taking a look at that, taking a look at the funds and seeing what that looks like. Maybe it might be year by year, maybe it might be three to five. But, you know, I think, I think it's sitting down with our financial team and seeing what we can do with that. If it's hiring more teachers, it might be optimistic of me as well to look forward to hiring people. But I think putting the best people in place is the answer. I would never want to look at that or look at our, check our pockets and, you know, consistently say no to hiring people or getting people in place. And it also goes back to what Mr. Aguirre was saying, you know, we're strapped with cash right now, what are we getting for it? So, you know, I think we really need to, to audit and take a look at things and, and see what that looks like. But I would never say no to, to hiring. But, you know, when we go, when we talk about sustainability, some, something that Mr. Dias is bringing up, it's also making sure that we have the infrastructure to, to, to provide our kids.
Thank you. Michael Sylvia has our next question for our candidates, and it will be answered first by Kevin Aguirre.
Attendance is a major factor in determining student success. What is a core reason for low attendance, and what are some specific ideas to get these kids with low attendance back to school on a consistent basis?
So attendance has been an issue here for a long, long time. And what we've done is we've, we've added staff, we've added a lot of attendance officers and the like. But I think one of the real keys is that we've been adding mental health workers, we've been adding school adjustment counselors. Some of the students that are not coming to school, they have issues not only with themselves, but the entire family. So we need to provide opportunities and services to not only help the children, but the families, the adults as well. That's one way. The second way is we need to be a lot more intense with our case management. We can no longer let students just, if they're not feeling well or just, we're not going to show up to school. We have to be intense, and we have to be able to work with families and build relationships. One of the things we've done over the last several years is we brought attendance vehicles, something that I pushed for very hard with one-time monies. So a student comes, I've worked in a school before, I've had parents say, can you talk to little Johnny because he's not getting out of bed? That's what our staff is doing and working every day. And now we have a resource to say, no, we're going to get in that attendance vehicle, and this gentleman and I, we're going to go pick you up, and we're going to bring you to school because we care about you and you need to be in school. I think we really just need to be intense on all things relative to attendance. And I think we're starting to get there. We finally have enough staff and we have the pieces in place, but we just need to ratchet up the intensity because there is no excuse for a student. You cannot learn if you are not in school.
Mr. Bailey.
Just being intentional. I think there's so many nuances that go on. I don't think there's just, you know, one direct reason why, why kids don't show up. I mean, different people have different issues in their family, right? Mine might look different than the other person's. But I think really learning these families, I think we did a great job. We put some community liaisons in to kind of build relationships with this family, I think, with families. I think we need to dive deeper. We need to really listen to families and help them. I continuously talk about resources and programming, tapping into some of our community partners and also seeing what that looks like. Obviously, there's an issue going on, not just in the nation, in the world right now, and trying to get people back to work. You know, it could be someone watching their little brother or sister so mom and dad can get to work. Who knows, you know, what the reason is. But I think it's really sitting down and meeting families. And like I said, you know, it's, it's across our Commonwealth, it's across the country right now. I think we're making strides. I think, and like, I hate to say it, but, you know, sometimes I keep bringing up COVID. I think that had a real impact on, on us. So for me personally, like I said, I just think there's many nuances. And I think once, once we get to know these families and know these kids a little bit better, we can start building those relationships and actually ask them and take poll and see what that looks like. Because I don't really think anyone sitting on this, on this stage really has a direct answer on what that looks like.
Thank you. Mr. Dias.
Thank you, Mike, for the question. A few ways we can tackle this issue because we, we know the, why, there's a lot of different reasons to why. But what can I do as one school committee member? What can I advocate for? Attendance, again, I want to be an advocate for a more inclusive environment, whether you live in the Highlands, the Flint, the North End, or the South End. We need to give a voice to everyone. If I'm elected, I'm going to be a big proponent for Christian Services. If a parent has an issue, if anyone has an issue, you can reach out to me, and I'm going to be a voice for transparency that we get your concern addressed in an open and transparent manner. We need to get politics out of the way. Local politics in the city has been an issue for a long time. But directly on to attendance, again, we need to reach out to parents. We need to go to them. I don't think we do enough of that. More PTO meetings, more parent workshops in their neighborhoods. Doesn't always have to be in the schools. Let's go out to them. Let's use our technology. We have technology. It's easier to go on a Zoom meeting than it is to actually come to a place. Let's use group chats. Let's have a group chat. Let's have open collaboration and open dialogue. And if I'm elected, I'm going to be a big proponent for open collaboration and dialogue with everyone, no matter what part of the city you're from.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Yeah, thanks for the question. It's a real tough one. Back in 2018, when I was on the school committee then, one of my first tasks was to join the Attendance Task Force. And it was, it was a very viable task force. It, we had nurses, we had some physicians, we had a lot of school personnel, we had truant officers, we had SROs, we had community activists all sitting together and scratching their heads. And truant officers literally ripped their hair out trying to find some type of solution to this conundrum of a problem that the public schools in Fall River have. It's been going on for years. Now, transportation feeds into this issue as well, so it's not a standalone issue. So when I was on the, the committee before, I proposed a novel idea of bringing the, bringing the adjustment counselor, the, the guidance counselor, and the vice principal to the Housing Authority projects, community centers, with the Housing Authority people, bringing the parents into the meeting. We provide pizza for them, and now we discuss their child's schooling and report card grades. But, you know, after we polled the entire project, maybe about 15 parents showed. So I think we're sitting on a cultural problem.
Thank you. Ms. Larabee.
Yes, thank you. At the beginning of the school year, we, we start, we had a big kickoff at Kennedy Park. And one of the biggest statements was something that the planning committee, planning the back-to-school block party came, came up with, and it was hashtag show up for FRPS, my apologies, hashtag show up FRPS. And that came down, we, we have a new assistant superintendent, I believe her title is Student Services, who is going to be dedicated to turning this around, to doing the best job she possibly can to, to turn this around. And she knows that it's going to take a whole community effort, okay? What are these kids doing at night? What are these kids doing to keep themselves busy? What are the, what are we doing in the schools to keep them busy, to keep them engaged? Why do they want to come back to school? You know, what are we doing? What, what people do we have that are boots on the ground? Okay, we say we have the attendance officers, we say we have all these new SEL liaisons, we have guidance counselors. Are they out, are they at the doors? Are they banging at the doors, say, let's go, where's, where's your child? And, and get through to these, these, these guardians and caregivers, parents, grandparents. We're dealing with grandparents who are, who are raising their children these days. You know, it's tough for them. Some, some grandparents have two kids, three kids, you know?
Thank, thank, thank you.
I wasn't.
Ms. Pereira.
Sorry.
Do you want five of my seconds?
No, no.
I'm not giving her any. We wish that we had the answer for this, right? But obviously, we've heard a lot of the same things, which is parent involvement. I mean, K through whatever grade, whose attendance, you know, 100% attendance is that? Is that the students' or is that mom or dad's? Let's be honest here. So we need our parents to be involved. We need to engage them in the process, again, from the beginning. There's a million different ways we can do that, but I think each school has to take that creativity on their own. Every principal and every school knows their students the best. They know the barriers of those families and students the best, right? So I think we don't have to do the same thing across the board in every school to bring attendance up. Every school may require something a little bit different, a different initiative. I think school culture is a big thing. If we're excited about being there, and our teachers are excited about being there, and our paras are excited, and I'm getting high fives, I'm going to be more excited about being there, right? That's just like anything. Transportation is a huge issue. I mean, I joked the other day on the radio, but yeah. If you gave me millions and millions of dollars and I could pick up every kid, I'd bring you a 90% and over attendance rate. That's the reality of what we're dealing with. But we need to find the barriers that we can figure out, whether it's looking into transportation or figuring out why we have kids in school refusal situations. And then figure out individually, this isn't just a one-check-fix-all or whatever. This is, it's, it's individual based on school and student.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers.
Okay, so if we're going to address attendance, I, I don't think it's as complex as folks may kind of look at this because we have other districts that are very similar to ours that actually do really well with attendance. So I think we have to look at other models to see what it is that they're doing. If you do look at some of those, what you'll find is that there is a complete wraparound, total school, home, community partnership approach to getting kids and families through the door. So we're looking at what are some of the barriers to getting kids into school. So we're looking at physical health, we're looking at mental health issues. I'm the first to tell you that our mental health issues have risen dramatically in the last five to 10 years. We're seeing more and more kids presenting with issues as young as three and four years old. Family circumstances, family emergencies, where our kids are responsible caretakers for other members of their family. We're seeing transportation, we're seeing safety concerns, we're seeing housing instability, food insecurity, and those things continue to grow. But the biggest factor is really that lack of engagement from our kids and families. And so how do we do that? We collaborate with our stakeholders. We establish clear attendance policies that are not punitive because research will show you that scare tactics do not work to get anybody through the door. In fact, they will drive folks away. We develop a positive school culture by creating scenarios where our staff are going out into homes and we're doing that work. I think what it comes down to is one caring adult can really start forming those relationships to get our kids in the seats.
Thank you. Pam Martin has our next question for the candidates, and it will be answered first by Bobby Daly.
Hi. What is the percentage of students who have been transferred to the Robert L. Maderas Resiliency Preparatory Academy over the past three years? In addition, what tracking mechanisms are in place to ensure these students are receiving their necessary education? And how can you be certain that the students do not slip through the cracks?
The exact percentage on that. As far as making sure students don't slip through the crack, I think a lot of that, we rely on from some of the principals and some of the data that we see from the superintendent. As far as my personal, pretty much relationship over there, I try to pop in as much as possible. I try to reach out to the prior principal to just check in, to kind of see what that looked like. I know the graduation rates could have been a little bit better and, you know, relationships could have been a little bit better with the kids. I know we had a lot of students at one point that were transferred over there just for credit recovery stuff and, you know, trying to get, get a hold of that. But I can't tell you what the exact percentage was.
Thank you. Mr. Dias.
Thank you, Pam. I apologize. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, and I'm not even going to speculate on the number. All I will add to the conversation is, I don't believe RPA should be a place where we throw students just to keep Durfee's numbers to be great. If we have, if students are going to go to RPA, it should be with a detailed plan. It'd be a plan to even come back into Durfee, and we should, you know, engage with them, like, keep with them. We, we shouldn't just throw them to RPA and just abandon them and, and that's it. But I don't think that's the case that's happening. I actually, recently, actually within this past week, a couple of faculty members from RPA, they actually told me, things are getting a little bit better there. So if I'm on the school committee, I want to talk with our stakeholders, the people who are boots on the ground, the security, the educators, maybe that be paraprofessional teachers, the people who see the students every single day and see how we can continue the progress. That's to be made, you know. We're not going to have all the answers, but I want to listen to them and develop a plan based on their expertise.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
So alternative education in Fall River, Pam, has, has risen to a level now where it's really drawing some serious attention. First of all, kids are not just, I don't, I hate to say just, you know, cast aside and put there. There's criteria at the middle school and the high school level in order for a kid, like, such as repeat offense, chronic issues, bad attendance, low, low grade attainment, issues like that put a kid on track for a placement in the alternative school. At the alternative school, resources have always been an issue. I, I don't know if that's being addressed. No, I hope it is. Staffing, you know, the lack of certain facility there compared to some of the facility at the high school. But they do provide jobs counseling for some of the older students there. I would like to see some of the kids at the, at the resiliency school be able to attend some of the CTE programs on campus at Durfee. And I can't help but think that that might help the outcome, you know, in the end.
Thank you. Ms. Larabee.
Yes. So I'm going to start off, I mean, Mr. Corey just hit the nail right on the head when it, when it comes to my opinion. I mean, we have 2,000 students over on Ellsbury Street walking into one of the best high schools I've ever seen in my life. And then we have our alternative students who already feel down on themselves, entering into a building that is beat down. Sometimes they shouldn't even be in, in, actually, we had to close the school, well, the superintendent and her team did, because there was no AC. But it, the equity there, it's, actually, it's lack of. So, I mean, I mean, moving forward, I, we, hopefully, we're going to get to where we need to get to. But I think we need to start focusing on what these kids need in the school. And my opinion is more workforce development, get these kids prepared for work, offer some new pathways of education. Right before COVID in 2018, they were, they were offering, you know, different groups, and they were offering CNA training, and they were offering culinary. So we need to start focusing on getting these kids back on track. We got to change the perception of that school as well. We have to stop, as, as a community, as, as a district, making these kids feel like it is a dropping ground. We, we need to start offering stuff in, in this school.
Thank you. Thank you.
I need to look up more.
Ms. Pereira.
I'll tap you next time. Pam, this was your question, right? I'm so glad you brought this up. This is such a good question. Yeah, the schools are not equitable. They need to be. The more I've learned in the past two years, I'm more and more sort of taken back. What I can tell you is that we have a new principal there. What I can tell you is I think the school culture is changing there. What I can tell you is there are many teachers there that are probably among the most passionate educators in Fall River or right there at the RPA. But I think if we want kids to feel good about themselves and come in and learn, then we need to give them-- we need to give them a building they feel proud of. We shouldn't send them to a building that has an auditorium that they can't access, that has an air conditioner that doesn't work, and then say, no, you're just the same as every other kid. Come on. So we need to start putting our money where our mouth is in regards to the RPA. Excuse me. And with that being said, we also need to bring the CED programs that were, that I think we lost some during COVID. Where are those? We're done. It's 2023, let's bring those back. 23, let's bring those back. And I agree with what Mr. Corey said. Why not allow them to go to Durfee and partake in some of those CET courses? Why not? I mean, isn't that what inclusion is? I don't know. So yes, you're right, but we're on it. That's what I can tell you. It's going to get better. We all acknowledge it, and we're on it. At least I think we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers.
So I think your original question was, what are the statistics? What are the percentages? And then what's the criteria for our kids going into the building, right? And for tracking? And so again, like everybody else, I don't have the statistics in front of me to be able to tell you how many kids have been going over there. But what I can tell you is that there is a criteria to send a kid over to RPA. However, I, and I would assume that most folks would agree here, that those criteria are not followed with fidelity. A lot of times, our kids are in buildings, and we've heard adults say things like, if you don't get back on track, we're going to send you over to RPA, as if it's a punishment. And so then that creates this whole other dynamic, which becomes really problematic because if you're going to ship me off because I didn't do something I was supposed to do, or I'm struggling to get here every day and my attendance is really shoddy, or I'm really struggling academically and now I don't have enough credits to be able to move on to the next grade, that doesn't feel supportive. And the whole point of RPA was to provide a viable solution for these kids to be able to move forward in their education. I've got three of my own children, and all three are on different educational paths. I have one who very well could be an RPA kid as it is supposed to be designed. But right now, we have a lot of issues. I'm hopeful with a new principal that we're going to be able to make those positive changes, but that doesn't negate the fact that there are already a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and we can't ignore them.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, so I think the question was about the numbers over there, and the numbers are unacceptable. That's just a fact. If we look back to the last several years, how did we get to the point that we're at here? So I recall three or four years ago, when the prior principal was there, Mr. Correa, there was a lot of good programming. There was vocational programming within. There was after-school programs, as well as working with online program to get students to get their credits a lot quicker. The school was doing quite well. And Mr. Correa was removed and moved to another school. I think we made the wrong decision with some of the leadership that we brought in. We basically went backwards instead of forwards, and I've said this in the Alternative Education Subcommittee, that I think we went backwards instead of forwards. So we need to get back to some of those things. One of the other things that is a problem, and you can look back at the record, Durfee High School several years ago sat at the administration building at 417 Rock Street with their program of studies, and they took all of the alternative education programs out of Durfee High School. I said it then, and I'll say it now. That was a big mistake. Nobody wants to own up to it, but that was a big mistake. So now we have a program like Evolve, which is a good program at Durfee High School. But if you're a freshman and you have no credits and you need an alternative setting, oh, you're not eligible. That's unacceptable as well. So we just need to look at it. And a good sign is we have a new principal. We have a new assistant superintendent. They're making some changes there, and I'm confident with their leadership that we're going to continue to make some positive strides. But we have gone backwards over the last several years.
All right. Next up, the first candidate that will answer first for this round is Thomas Corey, and the question from Alan Zarick.
This was debated earlier this spring, and I'm just curious. Should Fall River School Committee members be paid the same as their city council counterparts? Yes or no?
I could tell you that that was not a factor in my decision to run for the school committee. I don't think that the city, the taxpayers would look kindly upon such an notion at this particular time. Schools are getting SOA money, and the position of the school committee is a part-time job at best. We oversee things, but we don't run things, and so it's not a factor for me. I'm fine with the current setup.
Thank you. Ms. Larry.
Hi. Thank you for that question. Not at this time. I do not. Would I be open to a conversation, maybe amongst whoever is elected, maybe a cost of living? But I'm okay right now. That's all. I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion on that, Alan, hasn't changed. When we look at the importance of both jobs, they're both, in my opinion, equally important, right? A job of a school committee member and a job of a city counselor, equally important. That doesn't mean we're supposed to get paid the same just because the job's equally important, right? So a city counselor maintains an entire city. We maintain and oversee, as he said, we don't run, oversee a school district. Our budget is much smaller than that of theirs, right? We have one meeting a month. They have two. We're each on however many subcommittees. Trust me, they're on more. So the concept that just because the jobs have the same value, they should be paid the same, I don't know, it falls on deaf ears to me. They're two different jobs, in my opinion. So, no, it doesn't make sense. Do I think that we should maybe have a cost of living increase like every other job in the city? I mean, sure. But the reality is, it doesn't matter much to me, but I would be looking to think that would be fair in the future for other people who run. Alan, I'll be honest with you. My question really would be to the city counselors. I'm curious as to why we had a group of them that were ready to give me an $8,000 raise but didn't want to give me a $2,000 one. The kids, you know what they call that? Sus. Suspect.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers.
So I'm not hearing your question as, do I think that the school committee should get a raise? I'm hearing your question as, should they be paid equally for equal work? And the short answer to that is yes. People who are providing equal work should get equal pay. The question then becomes, how do we determine what equal work looks like and what does equal pay look like? We don't have a great system in the city to determine who gets paid on what board and how much. And so my argument isn't that maybe the school committee gets a raise. My argument initially was, well, are we looking at decreasing the pay of the city council as an option? I'm not suggesting that we should go down that route, but I think we've got to consider, how do we determine who gets paid what for serving on boards and doing equitable work? That becomes the bigger question for me. You know, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I had no idea that this position even paid. So I think another one of my colleagues, I think Mr. Bailey, also had no idea that we were getting paid until we were asked for direct deposit information. But that, so that doesn't become a factor, I think, in anybody's decision to run. But I think in order to get more people to take pride and take consideration and take an active role in different boards across the community, not just the city council, not just the school committee, we have to look at, how do we compensate people for their time? How do we advocate for people to get paid what they need in order to be able to do that work well and be able to do that work sustainably?
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, absolutely. We should get equal pay, and I do think that it's an issue that we should have looked at. When I brought this to the city council, the issue is at the city council's purview. It's not for the purview of this committee. When I brought it to the city council, everyone said, oh, I agree. Yeah, that's crazy. You had 20 years? You haven't got a raise in 20 years? Every single person that's ever served on the school committee doesn't do it for the money. But at the same time, why would they not get a raise for 20 years? But the city council got raises for the last 10 years. It's an inequitable process, and what my suggestion to them was that it should be equal pay. As Ms. Rogers said, if they want to lower theirs, so be it if they want to raise it, but there should be some sort of mechanism, whether it's over a period of years. Everyone I talked to on that city council said, oh, yeah, that, you know, I think it's a good idea. You should actually get a raise. The other part of it is, not one red cent. Not one red cent of the money that comes to any one of our salaries is affected by the taxpayers' one iota. So we have, we're sitting on $10 million of extra money in the Student Opportunity Act. Not one red cent would come from the city, the mayor's budget, or anybody's budget. It was something that I brought up, yes, to the city council. The city council failed us. They should have looked at it. They should also be looking at that. They said they've been looking at it for years, all of the boards, the city councils who dropped the ball here. But there's no doubt, we work as a school committee, we do double the work as the city council does, in my opinion, if you're doing the job right.
Mr. Bailey.
I mean, for me, once again, like Ms. Rogers was saying, I didn't even know we got paid coming on. When we compare and we talk about the amount of work we do, I know that my job extends well beyond just a meeting or two a month. You know, I'm consistently reading, consistently, you know, trying to improve and consistently trying to tap people to see what the best solutions are. As far as pay, I mean, for me, I mean, wouldn't make a difference, but it's not about me. It's about, you know, making sure people are compensated right. Me personally, no, but I think all in all, with the work provides, yeah. You know, but me, I don't, I don't really care. I mean, like I said, I didn't join to get paid, and I don't think anyone else did, and I want to be clear with that because I did, you know, you know, Ms. Aguirre, I did receive some backlash, in my opinion, which I don't think he should have. I think he does a lot of research and study, and he's been on the board for an extremely long time, and I don't think that's what he's getting, and so I just wanted to clear the air on that. But yeah, as far as the amount of hours and we talk about compensation, yeah, but for me personally, no, I don't think so.
Mr. Dais.
Thank you for the question, Alan. I agree with basically everyone, Kevin, Bobby, Sarah, and everyone, that there should be equality. Again, the city council shouldn't be getting pay raises every single year, especially with the financial situation this city's in. I think I have an outside view from everyone else here. I believe both positions should be volunteer, no pay for anyone. That's just my opinion, and that's something, that's something that would be decided by the city council. They fix the ordinances and make the legislation. So that's something I couldn't do as a school committee member, but that's the position I hold. And I will also say, if I'm elected, I'm not going to treat this like a part-time job. I'm going to treat this like a full-time job. I'm going to roll my sleeves and get the work for the students, the educators, the taxpayers, and any community member in the city. I plan on getting involved any way if I can. I'll serve on any, every subcommittee. That's fine with me. I'm really eager to help this city. But while we're on the logistics of the school committee, just real quickly, just a couple of ideas I want to throw out. I don't believe the mayor should be the chairman of the school committee anymore. We should have seven school committee members or just keep it to five. I believe it creates too many conflicts. I just, this from what I've witnessed over the last few years. And I think we should keep the powers of school committee members, individual school committee members, to request information and launch inquiries. Just keep transparency. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Our next question will be answered first by Shelley Pereira, and Michael Silvio will offer that question.
So I'd like to, I think people would like to know about what your background, what about your background would make you a good school committee member? For incumbents, besides being an incumbent, what in your background helps you be a good school committee member?
Thank you for that question. Besides being an incumbent, because you're right, that's not necessarily a qualification. It depends how good people think I did this past two years. So I have, my career, my life career, I've been a nurse, I've been an educator, now currently I work at the Department of Transitional Assistance. If you look at my life's work, it's always been working in urban communities, always with children and family, always with at-risk populations. I was a nurse at schools like RPA. I've worked at pediatric, you know, I was a pediatric nurse for years and pediatric psych nursing. So I think that it's a passion of mine, just to make sure that the job that pays my bills is also the job that fills my heart and fills my soul. I used to sell mortgages. That was fun, but it didn't, it didn't feel right to me. This feels much better. And there are days when I'm, whether it's my full-time job or this job, that you get super overwhelmed sometimes because you're dealing with so many people that struggle. And sometimes I have to put myself in check and take a deep breath and make sure they're getting the best of me. But at the end of the day, it only takes one client to just appreciate me and say thank you. And I mean, my fiance will tell you, I smile and I look at him, and I'm like, oh, I just got paid. That's, that's, that's why I'm here, and that's why I want to do this.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers.
So Mike, to clarify, your question is, what makes me qualified to be a school committee member? Like, what is my background?
Yeah, like a background, something like that. I have parents, I have kids, I know it in the system, or it could be my job or my educational background, something like that.
Okay. So I think there's a lot of things. So I don't think that being an incumbent actually makes us qualified to serve on the school committee. I think whenever we talk about open seats, I think we have to look at it as we have six open seats on the school committee every time. So being an incumbent is off the table. So I am a parent of three children. They each have three very different educational journeys. I've said it multiple times. I have one who's a high school sophomore, I've got, who's a very traditional student. I have another one who is multiply disabled, and so special education is a huge focus of mine. It's where I spent the last 13 years of my personal and professional life working in. And then I've got a little one who is the epitome of your typical eight-year-old second grader. So three different kids, three different educational trajectories. I hold a doctorate in social work, and that allowed me to really focus on leadership and clinical interventions as well as education. I also teach in education right now, so I teach at two multiple different higher education facilities. So just overall, I bring to that a lot of personal and professional experience that allows me to be able to have a different perspective on things.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, so I originally got into running for school committee, before I even had an education, I was a coach. That's the bottom line, how I got involved, was I was coaching baseball and basketball. I really enjoyed it, wanted to make a difference to the kids. Once I got involved in the school department, working on the school committee, I actually decided to go back to school and get my master's degree and advanced degree so that I could work in a school full-time. That's been something that's very rewarding for me. I've served as a guidance counselor, an adjustment counselor, a vice principal, and I currently serve as an elementary school principal. So my day job is all education, all education, and my nighttime job, my weekend job, is doing school committee work. But one of the things you've got to look at when you actually want to be an elected official, was what is your goal? Is your goal as an elected official to be a yes man and just show up to a meeting and say, oh, yeah, everything sounds good? Or is it to actually provide some oversight? That's what we get elected to do, is actually question things and actually provide some oversight. That's something that I pride myself on having done over the 14 years that I've served on the school committee. Sometimes I stand alone on a vote. Sometimes I vote with a majority. But at the end of the day, a true elected official needs to do the research and make a decision that's informed and in the best interest of the children or your constituents. And I do that on a regular basis. So I would just say, anybody that's in politics needs to ask that question, is what's the purpose of doing this job? Do you want to provide oversight, or do you want to just be a yes man? And I'm telling you right now, I'm not a yes man. I'm going to do what I think is right, and I put the time and effort in in order to make an informed decision on each and every decision.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
I've coached, mentored, subbed, worked at the power in special ed in the district, worked in, at Diamond for some time. I probably worked in the district as a sub for over eight years. I probably worked in the district as a sub for over eight years. Ended up leaving, getting a job at USpire, working at Durfee as a financial aid advisor. I've, you know, coached, I've done every single job here except get a teaching job. Reason why I left is because I never had an opportunity, I didn't know how, never got coached on how to do those things. I am the epitome of every single kid that has to persevere to get through this district. I graduated Durfee with an 0.6 GPA, graduated my grad course with a 3.7. When we talk about resilience, I am that kid. I'm resilient. Grew up in a single-parent household in a project. Mom had an eighth-grade education, I relate to these kids. You want to talk about community, I'm out in the community with these kids. You want to talk about serving as a positive role model, I'm all over. I never stopped working when it comes to these kids. I don't have any kids in the district, but I have nieces and nephews, and I, you know, I call all these kids my kids no matter where I go. I build relationships with kids, I build relationships with teachers, I'm a great relationship builder, and I do my homework. So when it comes to, like Mr. Agia was saying, I'm extremely intentional. I'll take tonight's meeting, I go down, I go home, I'll dissect it, I'll figure out what I did wrong and how we can move on, and I think that's what we...
Thank you. Mr. Dias.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for the question. So I'm barely the youngest on this stage tonight, however, I believe I can relate to the students because, one, I just graduated high school a few years ago, and I still am a student. I attend Bridgewater State University, and as just Bobby said, I'm in a similar boat as him. I didn't have the best GPA in high school, and I'm on track to graduate with about 3, 4 GPA, fingers crossed. I believe the community has seen myself be a big advocate, big advocate for doing what's right for the community, either on a school committee level, the city level, whatever level. I believe everyone knows I'm not going to be a yes-man. I'm going to go in, I have a lot to learn, of course, I still, but I'm surrounded by a lot of great people on this stage who are going to help me if I'm elected. I'm going to ask the tough questions, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to demand honest answers, and I believe I'm going to provide fierce accountabilities, accountability for the school department. Again, the community will see me advocate. I advocated, one thing I'm proud of, two years ago, we had a citizen's input policy that was abysmal. People would go before the citizens, before the school committee, they'd take my citizen's input, tear it up. It was terrible. But I advocated, I fought, I worked with the ACOU, and I had a new citizen's input policy that I advocated for, passed 6 to 1. We need people who are going to go in and not bend the knee to anyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Michael, that's a great question, because it harkens to the character of the candidates on the stage. I'm a lifelong Fall River resident. I was educated in Fall River schools the entire time, from kindergarten through Durfee High School. My mom was a factory worker, and she looked at me and she pointed her finger and she said, you will go to college. Because that really changed my life and made my life, you know, become aspirational. I'm a product of UMass Dartmouth, and I have a master's in counseling. My wife is a 34-year educator. I'm a 30-year educator primarily out of Durfee High School, but I worked also at the middle schools and the elementary schools as well. I was an advisor to two award-winning programs that we started with the kids, One Earth, One People Under the Sun, as well as Peaceful Coalition, which was an anti-violence, anti-gang group. So my work is directly on the ground level with the kids. When I retired from all of those years, I decided immediately to run for school committee, because education is my life, it's my passion.
Thank you. Ms. Larrabee.
Thank you for this question. So my whole adult career has been spent working with our inner-city youth from Fall River, up until six months ago. But I've developed so many relationships with parents, with students, with family members, with coworkers, and basically all with the youth and their futures in mind, okay? So I've developed curriculums that were focused on youth development and implemented them. I have, right at the beginning, when I ran for school committee four years ago, about that, you know, I noticed such a big gap between community and schools, where, you know, I thought it was time to advocate for our youth at a different level. You know, I wanted to try to do this, to try to get a better understanding of, what was that? Try to get a better understanding of why there was that big gap, and I wanted to be part of the solution. And right at the beginning, my platform was to bridge the gap between community and schools, and I've been working diligently to try to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I was hopeful we'd be able to get one more question in, but I think time is not quite on our side, so we're going to go right to our closing statements. Fortunately, all of you had the opportunity to answer a question first, so all of you are back in the pot, and we're going to go, same thing, I'm going to draw a name, and this candidate will provide their closing statement first. And the first 90-second statement will be offered by Sarah Rogers.
So I'm really bad at talking about myself, in case we haven't figured that out yet. So two years ago, I had seen some, some things going on in the district and had a lot of concerns about them, and that's what pushed me to run for school committee. So I've spent the entire, in the entirety of my adult life, working in service for youth and families in this community. This is all I've done. I don't know anything different. And so when we look at why I'm here, it's really to advocate for the best interests of every single student and every single staff person that's in this district. We want a healthier school climate. In order to get there, then we have to make sure that we have the resources and the supports that are necessary for our teachers to be able to do their jobs, and to make sure that our students that are coming through the door feel safe, feel stable, and feel secure in the walls of our buildings. We have to make sure that we are very clear in how, clear and intentional in how we are spending money, to make sure that we're not putting any burden on, any additional burden on taxpayers. We know the economy right now is extremely difficult, and so when we do that and we focus on sound fiscal management, we can allocate those resources directly to our classrooms. And then, as always, I'm going to emphasize the need for genuine support and inclusion, because having those relationships, fostering a sense of belonging, helps our students to be more successful, and it's going to allow each student to be able to learn from and with one another. That in turn creates a healthier school community.
Thank you. Mr. Agia.
I want to thank the, excuse me, thank the sponsors of this debate, I do appreciate it. I also want to say thank you to all the candidates for putting yourself out there, putting your name on the ballot, it takes courage, and I do appreciate it. To the people of Fall River, let me say thank you, both for your past and present support of my candidacy. I truly appreciate it. Public service has been an integral part of my life, and I truly believe I've made a difference during my tenure as an elected official. I work hard, I get results for the people of Fall River every single day. As a member of this school committee, I do my homework, I ask important questions, I advocate for our students on a daily basis, and the opportunity to serve as an elected official on this school committee in our community continues to be one of the most rewarding pieces of work I've ever performed. My experience with our education system, the legislative process, as well as my passion to make a difference for the children of Fall River, make me uniquely qualified to serve on the school committee. I am asking once again for your continued support. On Election Day, I respectfully ask for one of your six votes. Thank you, good night, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
As Mr. Agia was saying, I want to just thank you guys all for hosting, and I also want to, you know, like Ms. Agia was saying, it's not easy. When I ran two years ago, it was on a whim. I didn't think I was going to run. In my eyes, I feel like I needed to be the leadership that people see in a community. I needed to be someone that teachers and students and everyone in the community can easily access. I, to be completely honest, I didn't know if I was even going to run again. The reason why I did run is because one thing that didn't slip was my passion. I think, for me, it's, you know, really just looking forward and finding the energy and going through my own life issues and realizing this is what I need, right? When we talk about some of the issues that we are faced with throughout the city, I think it's, there's no question that I'm willing to put my boots on and face them, but also, like I said, to serve as a beacon. Looking for your support to continue to do some of the things that we started two years ago. Lot to learn, lot of work to do, but I'm that guy that's willing to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dias.
Thank you, thank you, Keith, and thank you to Fall River Reporter, Fall River Community Media and WSAR for coming here today and asking us the questions. First of all, people of Fall River, please go out and vote. The turnout in the preliminary was abysmal, and we can do better. Takes us a few minutes just to go and vote, please take your time, hand in a blank ballot, do whatever. I would appreciate one of your six votes, but let's get that turnout, let's get that turnout higher. In closing, I'm running because I believe everyone, as I just said prior, deserves a seat at the table. No one should feel disenfranchised, no matter where you live in the city. I'm going to be a voice for every single one of you. I'm running because I don't believe we should go backwards to where we were two years ago. I want to work with those who are already here and move our school district and move our city forward. I believe I want to get politics out of the room, I just want to do what's best for the students, educators, parents, and the taxpayers of this community. I'm going to be someone who's going to put 100% to the job, I'm going to be someone who's going to ask the tough questions and demand honest answers. That's what our community deserves. I would again appreciate your vote on November 7th, and let's make this school district work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Keith, I want to thank you and the staff here at FRG. Your questions tonight were awesome. I want to let the community know, I want to thank the community for listening in as well and taking part in this forum. When schools talk, I listen. When teachers talk, I listen. When students talk, I listen. When the community talks, I listen. My heart has passion, and I respectfully ask for your support on November 7th, Election Day. I have a proven record of experience, commitment, honesty, loyalty, and innovation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Larrabee.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith, for hosting. Thank you, everybody. You know, I would love the opportunity to serve my third term. I am very passionate about the youth in our city, I'm very passionate when it comes to understanding that they are our future, they're the, they're the future of the city of Fall River, and we have to start addressing some of the situations we have in the district. I mean, we're getting there, I believe we have the right person in place running the district. I think she's putting her structures in place and her staff in place, and we have to be patient right now. And I know some of us in the community, some of us up here on the panel, sometimes it gets very difficult to be patient, because we are dealing with such a critical population, which is our youth. But I'm in it, I am passionate about it, I'm still learning, but I am willing to do the work for this community. On November 7th, I hope everybody gets out there, they vote, and they vote for Mimi Larrabee. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
Hi, so first, thank you, Keith, FRC Media, all the panelists, and everyone up here, because I agree with Kevin, I'm appreciative of everyone's willingness to serve, because sometimes it's not an easy task, and I really hope that people that are watching are encouraged to do the same in the future. I would love to see a day where maybe we had to, like, bring the tables around, because we, I don't know, maybe have a primary? We need to get people engaged. So, you know, Mr. Dias said, vote, absolutely vote, but make sure you're thinking about maybe serving as well. So I was born and raised in Fall River, I have a nursing diploma from Diamond right here in the city, I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, I've been a teacher, I've been an educator, currently I work for the Department of Transitional Assistance. Although my most important job, honestly, is being a mom to two amazing daughters. Annie and Emmy are now off at college, and they've left me here, but it's okay, because I want to stay to make sure your children have the quality education that they deserve. I was very fortunate to be elected two years ago and was privileged to serve with some of the people up here today. So I'm humbly asking for your vote on November 7th, to be able to continue that service, because I truly believe that we have one of the most important jobs here, because the children of Fall River are our future. So putting them first puts our community first. So thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. And I want to thank the candidates and our panelists again for participating in tonight's forum. Special thanks to our FRC Media staff working behind the scenes, Steve Rice, Michelle Dumas, Denise Pumigwaye, and Lucy Cabral. You can watch a replay of this forum and find out more about the candidates running in this year in Fall River by tuning into FRC Media Channel 95, Fred TV Channel 9, and